You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 9th, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
All right, first off then, election of council president and vice president. I guess we're supposed to do that yearly. Anybody want to nominate anybody to be the council president?
I make a motion to nominate Dr. Lemay.
Is there a second? Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there nomination for vice president?
I make a motion to nominate John Coker.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, John. Okay, approval of the minutes. Council minutes meeting from December the 12th. I went through those and I just, just one correction. Deanna, on page two of 12, on the report about the Advisory Plan Commission, it says, Lemay said at that meeting, APC stated they would not revisit the height ordinance. Actually, what they decided was to not create an ordinance regarding maximum building size. Page two of 12, under the Advisory Plan Commission. I'm sorry, yeah, this, instead of revisit the height ordinance, it should not create an ordinance regarding maximum building size. And with that correction, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
I think I'm gonna, I could be wrong on this. I thought when we voted for the truck that night, Mary Lou, you would no vote on that? I thought you were.
Oh.
I think it shows us unanimous. I mean, it's not.
No, I did vote no, but I voted yes for the emergency truck.
You, you did, right. So for the fire truck, I thought you voted showing us unanimous. Not that it means anything, but.
Where's it?
Do you want to know where it is? I'm sorry, it's in there somewhere.
Ah, no, I have it.
I'll, I'll. I think it's early on.
Is that in your report?
It's, it's, it just records the vote. Hold on, I'll tell you where it, right where it is.
Is that a December 12th or December 27th meeting?
Is that under the Fire Commission, John?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Okay, I'm looking at it here.
Okay.
So it says here.
It's where the votes recorded.
Yeah.
It says it passed with a five zero vote.
Yep.
It's on, it looks like it's on the second page, just hardly down at all on the second page.
So that should be a four to one vote.
I think it was a four to one vote.
Under, under the Fire Commission. Okay? All right, so with those two changes, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then minutes of the special council year end meeting slash public safety building meeting, December 27th, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
And discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Committee reports, Police Department slash Commission Town Administrator Chief.
Good evening. For the month of December, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 212 calls for service when compared to 140 calls for service in 2021 for an increase of 72 calls for service. During the month of December, seven incident reports were documented. Five individuals were arrested. One was a felony arrest, reference a vehicle pursuit where Deputy Yagelski had clocked a motorist at over 100 miles per hour on US 12, which resulted in a pursuit and then eventual apprehension of the driver. Four additional arrests for misdemeanor offenses. Two arrests were for traffic related offenses and one was a warrant arrest for resisting law enforcement. Two additional individuals were arrested for operating a vehicle while intoxicated. Also during the month, I would like to congratulate Deputy Mitchell Sights for his work back on December 18th, where he had responded to a structure fire in a home that was filling with smoke. Deputy Marshal Mitchell Sights was able to assist the Michigan City Police Department, Michigan City Fire Department, and was first on the scene and had kicked in the door to the trailer home and had brought the gentleman that was inside who was overcome by smoke, brought him out to the front lawn where he was taken into the care of emergency responders. For that, he received a letter of commendation. The Police Commission met on January 5th last week. I would like to start by congratulating the Chief Deputy Marshal James Schooly for completing 25 years of service with the Long Beach Police Department back on January 2nd. We have a plaque that is a little bit behind currently at the plaque store, so Sergeant Schooly is aware that we'll be getting that to him. I did speak to him this week and we're very excited that he's celebrating 25 years of dedicated service to our community. At the Police Commission meeting, we also updated everyone on the new patrol vehicle. It went into production back on December 12th. We're scheduled to receive it late January, going into sometime in February. The 2022 year in review overall, 2022 was a very productive year for the department. When looking at the overall calls for service, we responded to 200, I'm sorry, 2,329 calls for service when compared to 2,450 in the year previous for a slight reduction of 121 calls for service. So about slightly 10 calls less per month, but we were pretty much on average. We investigated one residential burglary last year, and that was near Stop 18, a home was entered, and it was found that the home did not have any security cameras or an alarm system, and we are still actively investigating that. Majority of the theft investigations that we investigated during 2022 were thefts of either Amazon or FedEx packages. Those were the majority of the theft cases that we investigated. And then the only major investigation of concern was the very unfortunate double homicide investigation which occurred in the town of Michiana Shores back on September 1st. Aside from that, we are very pleased where we are as a department and as a town, and looking forward to 2023. Also on the Police Commission report, we'll be testing a new Glock sidearm firearm for deputies this Thursday. It is still a nine millimeter handgun, however, it is a Model 45. We currently carry a Model 17. The reason for the testing is there is a new optics system, which is a mounted sight that would be on top of the firearm. Many departments across the nation are moving towards this, and we're going to test it this week with the manufacturer here at the Michigan City Rifle Club, along with several other police departments from LaPorte County. And then see, the only other thing I'd like to touch on for the Police Commission meeting is that we set our 2023 goals. Those goals are to have a new ATV, which is a multi-seat all-terrain vehicle in place by Memorial Day weekend, hoping to have something in front of the council next month on a quote, reference that. We are working on additional training for our deputies this year, and then the goal of possibly updating our firearms. And then lastly, we'll be meeting with the new LaPorte County Prosecutor Sean Fagan next week on January 19th, and we'll be bringing him up to speed of any of the needs we have for the department and listening to any suggestions or input he has moving forward. And then I checked with both our Street and Water Department on the Town Administrator side, and at this time, I have nothing to bring to the council's attention tonight.
Okay, I realized I didn't take roll call, realize we're all here. Is Mike Johnstone on Zoom?
No.
No, okay.
Out of the country.
So four people here, one not. Okay, Volunteer Fire Department, Tom?
Good evening. For the month of December, the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department responded to 14 calls, 11 on the medical side, three on the fireside. Looking at the total year, we had 160 total calls for the year as opposed to 170 a year prior, so we're running just about the same call volume on the medical and fireside. That comes out to be 59 fire calls this year versus 43 a year ago. We had 101 medical calls versus 127 a year ago. Our average response time on fire calls is 4.5 minutes. Our average response time on medical calls continues to be 4.3 minutes. For medical calls, we're averaging five members on each call. For fire calls, including fire alarms, we're averaging eight members on these, on the fire calls. Just a couple of quick updates. The rescue vehicle that was referenced earlier, we've done all the lettering on that. We've got the running boards and the storage is taken care of. The last item before we put it in service is the radios and sirens. We've now contracted with a company called Federal Signal to do this, so we went out to multiple different bidders. They came with the best bid. We're still waiting for them to give us an estimate of when all the equipment will be through the supply chain, then they can give us a date as to when the vehicle will be ready. So we're anticipating soon. Soon as I get that, Mark, I'll coordinate with you on the suburban, because we want to get that out into the, onto the sales process. Other thing, just tonight, our, our team is doing their annual proficiency test, so there's the entire team's over there taking a 100 question written test. It's supplement to our practical exams that we do throughout the year on truck and equipment. So you'll see a number of members over there with their thinking caps on. Lastly, the Fire Department has again put out the danger thin ice signage throughout the community. It's all along Lakeshore Drive as well as around Long Beach Cove, just to make people aware that there is, we are on the winter season. You'll also notice wherever there are buildings that are sprinkled, we're now putting a FDC sign on each of these buildings to identify where the Fire Department connections are for these sprinkler systems, so that Fire Department, Fire Department in the middle of the night can, can quickly access that. So our Fire Commission met last week. I think, John, you're going to give the report on that.
Vice President, Technical Advisor. Fire Commission met, we actually spent a little time talking about the same things that Tom did, meaning the new fire engine that's on its way, as well as the lights, radio, and sirens for the new rescue vehicle. Again, we'd like to thank the council for those purchases. We did spend considerable amount of time on the Public Works building as well. We had a kickoff meeting subsequent to the Fire Commission meeting with the design build team, so we're making some great progress, and I'll have more to report on that a little later in the evening.
That's it? That's it, Dan? Public Works, Mary Lou.
The Public Works didn't meet because it was a holiday, so we meet on January 23rd of this month.
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mary Lou, just about the CCMG.
Oh, sure.
So we met with Haas, Tom Dolph and Mark Swistek and I met with Haas Engineering, who does our CCMG engineering work and helps us with the bids and then what, helps us watch the projects earlier, actually last week, and reviewed a couple of things. If you recall, we had a CCMG application that was supposed to go in the first of this year, meaning January of 2022. We had some paperwork snafus and were not able to apply for that. What we did do though is apply for what's called a second call, which meant we applied in the summertime for a smaller project. That project was awarded to the town, and I just want to bring everybody up to speed here because we do have to order the engineer to proceed. So the smaller project is 341,480 or so of that, and we've been talking about this all year essentially, but the paving portion, the crack filling adds up to about 85,000 for the towns portion, and the engineering would be 43,000. So the town outlay would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 129,000, which is pretty much the number we've been talking about all year. I just wanted to review that with the council this evening. What we decided to do for the coming year was, this package was awarded, this CCMG 2022 dash two was awarded in December, which is highly irregular. Usually they award that so that we could have done some work this year. So that project will essentially be done in '23. What that means is the town will be coming up with that 129,000 in 2023, and what we'd like to do with the, typically we would apply in January for the new year with a new project, and we have that $1.1 million project, which we were not able to do earlier this year, that's still hanging, and we have the engineering completed and everything. So what we'd like to do is potentially put that in for the second call in '23, award it and pay for it in '24. That's a $1.1 million project, or it was last year when it was estimated, it's probably going to go up a little bit. One caveat to that is about half of that 1.1 is storm sewer work, so we could potentially pay for that as we accumulate more funds, we'll have enough to pay for that in 2024 with some stormwater funds for the stormwater portion, which would mean the town's portion of that project, which would approximate, you know, three or something, three or $400,000, could be handled bulk of it with the stormwater fee. So that's actually a really nice time sequence for that expenditure. We'll finalize that a little bit later in the year, but I just wanted to make you aware of that progression, so hopefully we can still capture while that program's still active. I don't anticipate it going anywhere, but it's awful nice to get that 25%, I mean, get that 75% paid for by the state. So I just wanted to review this with the council this evening on the package that we were awarded, that 342,000 or so, we do have to expend 129 to make it work. Haas has their engineering proposal, and I'd like the council to approve again, which I think we've already done, but the expenditure for that engineering work to get it bid and get it awarded in the spring now and do the work when the paving plants open up.
So we need a motion to approve?
Essentially, yeah.
I'm making that motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything more, John?
That's it for that. Thank you. Sorry about the length there.
Good evening, everyone. Park Board and Community Center did not meet, so there will be no reports for those two, but I would like to briefly talk about the Park Board budget for a second. So as the council knows, the current Park Board budget that was approved by the state does not match what was submitted by the Park Board. In fact, it's nearly $100,000 lower. So that being said, the parks will be able to fund their basic routine functions. This will include the, all of the park employee salaries and the summer park program. What it will not include are any of the following 2023 proposed projects, which were discussed at length at our August 2022 budget meeting. Those are engineering plans for an ADA beach stop at 15, guard railings at 21 and 23, tree trimming in any of the park areas, remodel and expansion of the Memorial Brick Garden, pavilion tennis court area upgrade, landscape architect plans for an ADA walkway in the park, or upgrades to Room 14 at the Community Center. In addition, the park's landscaping budget was cut in half, which means we may not be able to fund the routine maintenance of the park areas and the stops. So my request tonight would be permission from the council to sit down with Helen in the next couple of weeks to come up with a plan to hopefully access some additional funds that we could present for consideration to the council at your February meeting.
Were all those projects that you just mentioned, would $100,000 cover them all? Or it seemed like there was a lot of projects for $100,000 or?
It's not really. For example, the, this year for the ADA stop, we're just looking for engineering.
Okay.
Not the whole.
But that would, that would be able to do most of those projects, if not all of them.
Oh, yes. We, we, if we had our full budget, we could.
Right.
Joy, will you make sure Deanna gets a list of that?
Yes.
What we were deficit in?
Absolutely.
So I make a motion that we make up that deficit.
And it's okay for me to work with Helen.
So should we, should we settle on that?
One thing, I, so in terms of the budget and finance, I hate to jump in here, but in terms of the budget and finance, we're going to meet with our little working group, you know, Mark and Mike Johnstone, if he's back, and myself and Clerk Perry in about two weeks, and we're going to hammer out where we're at. We still don't have year end stuff yet, which is not out of the ordinary this early in the year. Hopefully by then, we'll have a rough idea what our balances are. I think we can certainly do that, Mary Lou, tonight, but I think it might be best if we just did that budget finance, because none of this is time sensitive, if I'm understanding correctly, right? You don't have to authorize any of these expenditures right away?
No.
If we, if you could allow us the time to just pound the numbers a little bit, we may be able to come up with more. At least we'll be able to tell you where we want to get it from, because right now it's a little nebulous. Would that be all right if we just?
Yeah, then I'll take my motion away as long as we say that we will look at it. When is the budget, the budget, actually, I showed up last week for the Budget Finance meeting, not knowing it wasn't going on. So when is it?
Yeah, I apologize for that. So what happened was the calendar, the website calendar, I've gotten in trouble before when I hold meetings when it's, it's not what's shown on that website calendar. So the website calendar had a different date. They actually had the next Wednesday.
Which is this Wednesday?
Yes. So, so what we, so what we did was, we didn't hold it on the first Monday, or first Wednesday, which is what you would have thought, and correctly so, because that's what we've been doing. We'd like to return to that more than likely, but for January, until they have their information together, we're probably going to postpone it one more week. I think I sent a note out there.
I did see the note.
Try to get it that week of the 23rd.
Okay. I'm not available, if it's on a Wednesday, then I can't, and I have an appointment.
Well, we can move it around, Mary Lou.
Okay.
If you, if you give me an idea.
I'm not on the committee, but I would like to be present, so I know.
Yeah, it's not a problem at all to move it around.
Okay.
What we'll do is, when Tim gets back, I think he's back Wednesday or something, we'll, we'll get with Helen, everybody, we'll, we'll knock a date or two around and get with you. We'll have to do a public notice again, because it's, okay. Apologize for that screw up on the first Wednesday.
And Joy, when you and I had talked previously and after talking to Helen, I think what we want to do in the working group that John's identified in that is take the specific project, identify where we can pull the funds from, like say rainy day riverboat, and then that's what he's actually getting at, is designating where we're going to find the buckets of revenue to pay for the specific, you know, projects and that, but definitely we want to address those and find ways to continue forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good deal. Budget and Finance, is Mr. Perry out there on Zoom?
I didn't see him. I must see he's under a.
Mr. Perry, are you out there?
Unless he's under a federal witness protection program, I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't believe Budget and Finance had a meeting.
No.
Since our last meeting, so I guess we're. Human Resources, Mary Lou.
Okay, the Human Resource met on January 4th. We talked about performance appraisals, and I had sent out a notice probably in the fall to different communities that are, that we usually review, and so I, it was interesting. The one that we rely on the most, that probably has the most money in the area, doesn't have a performance review, but we did get one from Westville, and we liked it. It was very to the point, simple. And so in the meantime, the committee talked about it. Mark sent it out to the employees. We're looking for feedback for that, so we can start implementing something like that in the future. The next thing, which I didn't know about, but John Coker had asked Mark to look into a medical trust healthcare plan, and Mark has reached out to our general insurance, right? He's reached out to them, and we should be hearing back from them, just so we can see where we're at. And Dr. Lemay was at the meeting, so if people are, if they understand, like when I worked at several companies, we were self-insured. So that's what, that's pretty much what a medical trust healthcare plan is, so we need to see what that is. And we're just getting, it's just a fact finding thing right now. We also talked about the, to replace the person in the water department that's going to retire, so we will be looking for someone, if you know of anybody that wants to come in and work here. And then the last thing was, we, one of the employees requested, I guess Bill used to do this at year end, and he would tell them what they, what they had before and what they were going to, and their medical and different things. And so, thank goodness, Mark and Renee did it within like 24 hours for me, because I said, well, I don't know if I can do it this year, but let me work on it. So they did it, and they put it in their paychecks. It just kind of tells them what to expect with the, with what we're going to be paying in health insurance and what their increase and different things. The next meeting will not be on the first Thursday of the month. We are, and that'll be the only exception that I know of for this year, it'll be February 9th at 1:30. And that's all I have.
Okay. Tree Board.
Ellen is not here, but they did not meet, so.
Building Commission did not have a meeting. Next meeting will be on 1:13, that's Friday, I believe, at 1 o'clock here. Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet. Next meeting is scheduled for 1:10 at 7:00 PM, although right now there's no, nothing listed for the agenda, so if.
There's a preliminary here tomorrow.
Oh, there is. Wait a minute, no, that, this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm.
BCA.
Yeah, B, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank God that.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah, so tomorrow night, they'll, they'll meet on 1:10 at 7:00 PM, and yeah, they do have an agenda item. Advisory Plan Commission, that's what I was thinking of, they did not have a meeting, and next meeting is scheduled for 1:16, however, they have no agenda items, so I'm getting confused with my Eponins. Building Permit Revenue Report, do we have that? I guess we don't, or do we?
I can read it.
Oh, good, okay.
Can you hear me?
Come on up here.
Up here, just so people.
And then make sure you turn it on again.
So for December, 13 permits totaling $372,460 and revenue on that of $4,230. Four electric permits issued totaling $508. Five street cut permits issued, revenue $500. Legal expenses paid in December totaled $14,494.50, $232 of that to Barnes and Thornburg, and the remaining $14,262.50 to Bragey, Nelson, and Janes, which were for both November and December invoices on that.
So I think you meant to say $14,000 to Bragey, Nelson, and Janes, right?
$14,262.50.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Deanna. Unfinished business, I have none. New business?
When are you going to do the part?
That's, I've got it on here.
Okay.
So committee board appointments, so some of our boards require yearly approval or And then we've got one member of the Park Board who was put on to replace somebody whose term was through 2022. However, with our new term limits, I'm totally confused as to what to do with this. I would suggest we put this off until next month.
When Mike's there.
Yeah, Mike can figure out these term limits, because he may be the only one who understands them.
Dr. Lemay, I might suggest that if things progress with the public safety building, you may have a contract to consider prior to next month's meeting, so maybe leave it open that these board appointments, when Mr. Johnstone is back, could coordinate those and have a special meeting in between. So it depends on what your pleasure is with regard to the appointments, but if he's back, I anticipate you may need to have a special meeting to finalize your contract.
Okay, so yeah, maybe we can deal with it then if he's back. Yeah, to the next meeting, whenever that is. Is everybody okay with that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Water Department Clerk, we have a Water Department Clerk who's requesting to work alternate hours. She'd prefer to work evenings and weekends. In my view, her function is somewhat critical to the function of that department, and if she's not working for us, I think we're going to have a problem getting out the water bills, but I'm open to discussion on that. It's all open for discussion.
I make a motion to approve it. We will be looking for her replacement, and so then that will take care of it, and she said she would stay and help train that person.
I guess I'm confused. What do we approve?
This is to approve the alternate hours for that.
What's alternate hours?
She wants to work weekends.
Weekends.
Yep, there we go.
Right.
Yeah. As opposed to being here during the daytime. Most of what she does is clerical.
Can, can all other employees request alternate hours? I don't know.
None of them have asked for it.
Wow.
That, that office is somewhat dysfunctional.
I know.
I think she'd like to escape from dysfunction.
Thank God.
I, I don't see a problem with it. Frankly, if we don't have her, we're going to be in trouble.
You'll never see another water bill.
That might be good.
I know.
Nobody complains. So for, for the sake of discussion, I'll go ahead and second the motion. Discussion. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Hey, before we.
Sure.
I'm sorry, so Mary Lou, you guys are starting an active search? Is it actually going to be, I mean, is that something that's going to happen?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. It seemed like it was.
Well, no, we actually, after our HR meeting on Thursday, I talked to Dr. Lemay and Mark, because there were only three of us from here, we didn't make any decisions during our HR. our HR meeting. There were only three of us here. And I asked if I could talk to the employee that's, that works in there two days a week. And I talked to her and asked her if she would be interested in the position. And she said, she really didn't give me a commitment. Then Mark tells me today she is not interested in it at all. So now I need to really look for somebody that can fill in. Because it, believe it or not, it's a very detailed position. You back up a lot of things. You're, I mean, you're helping the...
Well, are we advertising for it, or will be advertising?
We can. We will.
Well, the sooner the better.
All right. Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
So, so what we'll be advertising for is a general, part-time Water Department Clerk, and the hours are typically 20 to 30 hours per week. And then we'll get the advertisement out, and then get the information to HR, and proceed from there.
The other thing is, the Water Department, if you look on the web, or it used to be, I don't look lately, they work 8 to 2. So they work six hours, and then they go home. So I, I'm hopeful we'll find somebody. I hope we find somebody detailed, like the person we have now. And I, I will get with Mark, and we'll get something to get out there, so we can find someone. And if anybody's listening to this and has an interest, we'd be happy to hear from them.
Okay. Next agenda item is a request to connect to the Michigan City Sanitary Sewer Line. And that is coming from Pat Burke of 1302 Lake Shore Drive. About four years ago, we allowed the Jaskas, who I believe are at 1300 Lake Shore Drive, to hook into the Michigan City Sanitary District Sewer. They did that in the agreements that we have with them. It looks like we agreed to allow other people to hook into that, although I think the maximum is going to be four people, and they all had to be north of Lake Shore Drive. They had to do it within two to five years. We're within two to five years. I'm a little surprised at this, and that Michigan City is kind of going back on what they said as far as letting people hook in, but I do think it's a good thing for the...
This house was already hooked in. This house was hooked in, and the previous owners were paying the bills. In fact, I think the Burks paid the bills, but then that house was demolished, and a new house was built.
Oh, is that Liddell's old house?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, that's that house, and I think 1300 is the same, same thing.
It's right as you come into Long Beach.
Yes, it'd be the second house on the left.
The two new ones?
Two new ones.
So, Liddell's never paid Long Beach Water. All they ever paid was for refuse. They paid leaf pickup.
Well, this, at any rate, this is going to be to hook up into the sewer, which the previous owner was hooked up into, and Michigan City was collecting the, and what they're saying now is, it's okay to do it, as long as they get the approval of the town, which I don't see why they're saying that. But the house has already been approved to hook into it, so...
So there's already a stub there?
Yeah.
Right.
And so there's two stubs, one at 1300, one at 1302. But because the house at 1300 was torn down...
And so was 1302 tore down.
Okay. Okay. So now they just want permission from us to reestablish the connection that they already had?
Already had, exactly.
And, and Dr. Lemay, they had it way before Jax's, because then the water side, they never, that was one of the...
Burke. We're given, yeah, we're authorizing that it's okay for Burks to hook up to that sewer, and then they would, I assume, notify either the sanitary district or the powers that be in Michigan City. Where did the requests come from? The Burks? The Burks, they were doing everything they thought they were supposed to be doing, got easements and agreements with all the owners and everything they're supposed to do. And they thought it was a done deal, because it had already been hooked up. And I think they might have already been paying some fees for it during, prior to their construction. And then when the construction got to the point where they had to, I suppose, rip everything down, and, and reestablish the line, then they're saying that they have to get permission, or approval from the town. In other words, the town's got to give the blessings for them to do that. Well, I would suggest any improvement, because there was actually an agreement before with the Jax's, a written agreement that was recorded, that if you're inclined, so that you don't hold them up, that it is subject to, you know, any proper agreements that are required between the town and/or sanitary district, and the parties get executed, along similar terms that Jaxa, and is it, as well as any code changes since then. But at least that would move it along.
They, they had it before.
Well, that, I'm not, however, this request for their approval to hook in, and they're saying they need it, there's, unless you have some written documentation or proposal, or something in writing to show that you've approved it. So if it's simply a vote, that they need to show that you, you, as a town council, authorized that, that's why I'm saying I think the, you, you ultimately authorizing them to do it, subject to appropriate... I don't know if the Burks are on the, on the, are the, Pat, are you on there? No?
There's some iPhones on here. I can't tell what's on here.
Joey, you had a question?
I just want to point out that 1300 and 1302...
Oh, come on up here.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just wanted to point out that 1300 and 1302 run directly into the Michigan City Sanitary Sewer, unlike Jaxa, who had to install a whole low-pressure system and run from further down Lake Shore Drive into. That's why his was such a big deal, and they wanted to get other people to join.
Right. So this is really not...
They're not included.
Related to Jaxa.
No.
They, they didn't have any options, these two people, I don't think, because there were no septic's there before.
Yeah.
It gets back to my point, that if you approve it, subject to any agreements that might be necessary, there may not be any. The issue is, who's, right now, is that you have an agenda item to approve somebody to hook in without any written documentation from the district, or those that are requesting it. So if you just approve that you have no objection to it, and you authorize it, subject to the execution of any agreements, if necessary, then I think you're covered.
I, I think we should see the agreement with the sanitary district at some point, though.
If there is, yeah. Given the current environment. They may just have to stub, they may just actually pay and stub and tap into it, and it's fine. That's why I'm saying I think... And that's, I think that's all they have to do, is just hook it up. And so if they just want to see in the minutes and receive confirmation, that's fine, too. But I think if you, if you're inclined, you approve it, and then require, subject to any agreements that are required. There may not be any.
I make a motion, since it's already a pre-existing sewer line there, way before any of us, that we approve for them to tap into that.
I think, I think it's important to distinguish between us and the Michigan City Sanitary District, though. So what we're doing is, we're in favor of them doing what they've asked us to say that we're in favor of them doing.
Right.
But what they're going to do is, they're going to approach Michigan City to reconnect to their sanitary. So we're not involved in that transaction whatsoever, but it'd be inter, I think it's, because of the environment that we're in with Michigan City Sanitary right now, I think it'd be good that they came back to us at some point. I don't want to hold them up. But I think they need to come back to us with whatever document says that they're authorized to hook up to Michigan City, just because of the environment we're in with them right now.
Right.
So I'll, I'll second the motion and the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah. So I second the amendment and the original motion.
Okay.
Okay? All favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Public Safety Building Corporation Board. So we need to appoint some folks to this board.
So I read John's note, and we need, how many, John?
Well, Carl Sender said, first of all, we haven't even finalized the start of making the building corporation, although I think Chris can fill us in a little bit. He and Sender have had some conversation along that line. So there need, Carl said to me, and I think Chris will confirm, this building corporation, much the same as the one for the Town Hall, I think has to have three people on a board of directors. So it's, it's a, I don't know if it's an LLC or what it is, but it's a...
It'd be a corporation.
It's a formal corporation, that will need three boards, board members. The board members cannot be, what is what Carol told me, they cannot be council members or employees. So we need to find someone now, whether it be like another...
So I think we need to put it out to the public, and I would personally like to see somebody from the Fire Department on that board, too. I mean, of those three, one, at least one person be a member.
Well, I don't know if you want somebody from the Fire Department on there. It's, it's basically a holding corporation, and...
Oh, okay.
They're going to meet once a year, just to say hello. I mean, it's not, there's not a whole lot of meat and potatoes to it. Once the negotiations for the financing are complete, all they do is ride herd over the financial transaction.
And you don't have urgency, but we certainly don't want to drag it out, because as this thing starts to gain some more momentum, we'll need to have that set up, so that bond council that you will have, and that corporation will be ready to roll, it can be set up, organized in one day. So that part of it's all right. But I do think before your next meeting, if everybody could gather, submit, even if you put it out there and have those letters of interest to each of you, then you could make a decision. There are 50 letters of interest, and I think surely three of those people would be interested out of all those 50 people.
Then it doesn't look like we handpicked somebody.
So should we send out a letter, or an email, telling people?
Yeah.
Yeah, post it on the website, and I'm sure you'll get three.
Yeah. And if we don't, we'll just, we'll have to handpick three somewhere along, right? Okay. But to Chris's point, though, so by our next council meeting, certainly, we should have that. So that letter needs to go out soon, is, I guess, is the point.
Okay. So I'll, I'll talk to Meg about posting it on the website.
Great.
That sound good? Okay. Public Safety Building Notice to Proceed.
I just wanted to make you aware, so, just so we're on the same page, what we're trying to do, we've had this working group that's been working all year on the bidding process, according to state code, and trying to do everything according to the, you know, the dot and the I's crossing the T's. There, there will be some things that really don't need the council's attention. This is one of them. Basically, it's kind of a formality in the construction process. There's a letter that typically goes out that says formally, because, you know, we've told them that the council approved the project, but they need a letter that basically says that. So essentially, that's what we're asking for tonight. It's just, not even asking for it, but essentially just letting you know we're going to kick out the notice to proceed.
It's just, I drafted the letter based on your meeting at December 27th. You unanimously voted to retain the services, the design build services. There will be a contract. There's still that budget, so anybody who's listening, that number that was thrown out is the upper limit. It doesn't affect those, but it's, it's allowing Holliday to move forward and, you know, basically be their gesture of good faith to keep going. So that's all it reflects is, accept this as your notice to proceed.
It's a pretty typical and accurate sort of thing that goes on in construction projects. Moving on to the next one, the building, oh, I'm sorry, does anybody have any objection to that, or anything? Are you very okay? Okay. The soil borings issue, essentially, in the bidding process, the town volunteered to come up with the soil borings that prove out. And again, some of these expenditures can be put to the design build team, but then you get their markup on them. So there are some things that we probably want to hold ourselves. Soil borings, essentially, you know, we did take bids based on some assumptions relative to structural issues, to the, the structural bearing capacity of the soils and that sort of thing. And what we need to do now is provide the design build team with some verification of that. What they do is, they, you may have seen these rigs on highway jobs, they drill down 20 feet, they figure out where the water table is, they take samples of the soil, they do engineering analysis on the soil, they come back and tell you it's got a bearing capacity of X, and then they can design the building foundations in the building, so that they can order the building. I got three bids on that. We had one from AES for $5,500. We had one from KNS for $6,400. And we had one from Beaver, Weaver Booz for $9,200. So what I'd like to propose tonight is a motion would be an approval of that $5,500 expenditure for the soil borings.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Next agenda item is the settlement agreement. Chris, can you kind of fill us in on the background of that issue?
Well, in the background, I informed you at previous meeting that there was a proposal and some discussions between Jeff Bartlett's council on a, regarding a tort claim notice that he filed with the town. It alleges certain claims against the clerk treasurer, without getting to the merits of that. What has been negotiated is a proposed settlement that contains terms, and each of you has been presented with that proposed settlement agreement. But, you know, bottom line is, it's agreeing to pay $2,500 in legal expenses for Mr. Bartlett, as well as a statement to be made by the council, if you were inclined, in exchange for Mr. Bartlett releasing and resolving any claims against the town council members, the town, and clerk treasurer in his official capacity. So without really, you know, again, normally I recommend that we don't discuss pending litigation. This is heading it off, so that this ends any threat of litigation. And, and again, without getting into the merits, you have the ability that if you're inclined to those basic terms, there's a release and settlement agreement, and an exchange and payment of that $2,500, as well as a statement, and that will be over as far as the town is officially concerned.
Okay. So if nobody objects, I'm going to read.
Well, let's, let's, let's see. I just want to make sure everybody approves of the settlement, because that is part of the, that town council, that statement is actually part and parcel. And I do want to tell everybody and confirm that I have a signed copy from Mr. Bartlett as well, so that if you're inclined to approve it, it will be a done deal.
And Dr. Lemay, if I may add, I did speak to, through email today, the Bartletts, asking if this was going to be on the agenda, and therefore I did review tonight's agenda prior to this being added, and I did not see it on the original agenda. I believe the Bartletts would like to be present when this is read, so maybe...
I think they're on Zoom.
She, Kendra's on.
Yeah.
I informed the council. So I, so that part is up to you, and I defer. I think we're both just passing along information, because I did indicate to their council, or Mr. Bartlett's council today, that if they were inclined and returned a signed copy, that you, you might be inclined to consider it this evening.
Okay. So I make a motion first for the council to hopefully accept the settlement. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to read Exhibit A, and then I'm going to ask everybody to approve that. Long Beach Town Council Public Statement, the Town Council has been informed that on or about May 14th of 2022, Town Clerk Treasurer Tim Perry contacted resident Jeffrey Bartlett's employer, and under his title as Town Clerk Treasurer, indicated that the town possessed information which calls into question Mr. Bartlett's character and his fitness to be an airline pilot. The Town Council is further aware of a private dispute between the Bartlett family and Mr. Perry, which predated Mr. Perry's appointment as Town Clerk Treasurer. Mr. Perry's statements were made without the Town Council's knowledge or approval, and his actions were outside what the Town Council understands to be the duties and responsibilities of the Clerk Treasurer's office, under applicable provisions of the Indiana and Long Beach Town Codes. Furthermore, the Town Council has not approved and does not approve, condone, or support any such statements or actions at this time. On behalf of the Town of Long Beach, Indiana, I, Robert Lemay, as Town Council President, and on behalf of the Town Council, which to now apologize for Mr. Perry's poor judgment and deplorable actions. And the Town Council deeply regrets any issues, inconvenience, or other problems Mr. Perry's actions caused, not only Mr. Bartlett, but also his family and employer. I'll make a motion for the council to approve that statement.
I second it.
Any discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, Chris, you're going to send a letter to Mr. Bartlett's employer, basically, I think, confirming this, Mary.
Confirming, make sure that we finalize all the signatures.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good. Uh, next. So we've become aware that Mr. Pressle, our favorite state legislator, is once again introducing legislation that will be detrimental to the Town of Long Beach, particularly the protection of our shoreline. I think I've shared that with everybody on the committee. Everybody has seen that. To me, I think we need to hire a lobbyist to try and protect our interests downstate. If this legislation gets passed, and the homeowner who has engaged Mr. Pressle's services, and wants to build this revetment out into the lake, no one's going to be able to walk in front of his property along the shoreline, because basically they want to redefine the natural ordinarium watermark. So I would make a motion that we retain the services of our lobbyist. I've talked to him, and Chris Gibson is...
He's on, too.
Yeah, and he's willing to go with the same contract we had last time. In fact, he's added a clause that if Mr. Pressle decides to not pursue this, this legislation, that he will only charge us for the services he's given up until that time. So it's actually a little better contract than what we had last time.
So what was that total?
Same $25,000 in four installments.
Okay.
Chris, I think you're out there. Do you want to explain a little bit more about this legislation and the peril to the town?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Lemay. My name's Chris Gibson. I'm the managing principal of the recording group. And as I think most on the council know, and probably most in the audience, we've, our firm has represented the town... we've, our firm has represented the town for the last several years on a number of items, including issues regarding the beach. It came to my knowledge that Representative Pressel was pursuing legislation this session. I was able to get a draft of that legislation that I think Dr. Lemay has provided to the council. I was able to talk to Representative Pressel today and confirm that he is pursuing this legislation. He also said that there would likely be language added in addition to what I provided as the draft. He would, there would be language regarding some notice requirements in regard to sewer lines and three hundred foot rule. I will admit, I'm fairly shaky on the details. It was about a, you know, two-minute conversation I had with Representative Pressel at the State House today, but he did confirm that the draft would be introduced as legislation this year. Essentially, you know, I think the false premise, at least from the town's perspective and my perspective, dealing with this issue the last several years, the false premise that the legislation will be based on is that the ordinary high watermark moves on a, you know, regular basis. And when Representative Pressel and I spoke today, he indicated that he thought the ordinary high watermark moved from hour to hour. I don't believe that's been the standard. I certainly don't pretend to be a surveyor or an engineer in this regard, but, you know, I think if we set a standard in statute that the ordinary high watermark can be determined literally on a fluid basis where one day it's, you know, a potential permit structure is on the lakeward side of the ordinary high watermark, and the next day it's on the landward side of the ordinary high watermark. I'm not sure how the town is ever gonna function or, you know, in good faith, you know, approve or disapprove these permits because it, you know, the statute, at least the draft that I've seen, would set up a situation where, you know, literally, I mean, and I'm quoting the draft that I have in front of me, that, you know, that at other times, the seawall or revetment would be on the Lake Michigan side of the ordinary high watermark. So, you know, if this is gonna be the standard, I think the council's gonna have a very difficult time enforcing its shoreline ordinance. So I'll, you know, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, so I think everybody's seen that contract. Okay.
I'm gonna make one comment just for public information. Save the Dunes is on record now. We just received a letter this afternoon. They're encouraging us to also enlist the help of the lobbyists, and I think they also intend to, whatever testifying or any other public information campaigns need to go on as well. So they are aware and they're back in our camp again in this fight.
And I think I forwarded all the letters from residents to everybody. Uh, and I just want to mention there were three more this afternoon after I forwarded everything. So there are three more in addition to that.
Well, this also doesn't take away most of the authority of the town and shove it onto the DNR. And so basically, the town would have no, no say-so to speak of. So I think Chris and I talked about that yesterday.
Yeah, Counselor Coker, I think that's, you know, correct. I mean, I think currently the standard in the jurisdictional, you know, line in the sand, no pun intended, is the ordinary high watermark. If it's lakeward, it's DNR's jurisdiction. If it's landward, it's the town's jurisdiction. If that's a fluid standard that changes literally, you know, and I'm just quoting Representative Pressel from today in our conversation, if that's literally changing hour to hour, I don't know how you as a governing body can enforce, you know, permitting laws.
Going forward, whether it is or isn't, as you state, the other issue is they can pass whatever they'd like, but you're faced at some point with deciding whether that's legal and that determination gets made in a court, right? So at some point, if you don't make this effort, what they pass doesn't necessarily take away your authority within your town limits, but it does create a gray area, much like we already have with what the DNR did administratively, and they use a different standard for determining it. So there are already some gray areas exist. And my point being is the first test case that comes along and the building commission does not follow because this would impose on the town's authority, and we don't believe that the state has the ability to take that away there. Now we have a legal fight as well. So no matter what, there are some legalities that are going to happen that it certainly makes sense to on the front end.
And if we can defeat this downstate, it'll hopefully keep us out of court. I think that's, that's the plus. So I'll make a motion to retain Mr. Gibson's services.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, and I think, Chris, I have a copy of that. I think it has just a place for my signature, right? So, okay.
So we'll be in touch regarding lobby registration, compliance issues, and, you know, things you've done in the past, Dr. Lemay. Appreciate it. We'll be in touch soon.
Good, all right. Great, thanks, Chris.
Great.
Uh, last agenda item, I think at the last regular town council meeting, we asked the clerk's office to give us a report on weekly deposits and on the checks to vendors. Uh, I haven't seen that. Has anybody else seen that? Anybody? We don't have anything, right? Yeah, no, you weren't at the meeting, so I wouldn't expect that you would know it. Okay, so. Yeah. All right, so I think maybe, can we ask the clerk treasurer to maybe bring that budget finance?
So I think the intent with the working group that's, in fact, I'll give you the date so you know what's going on. And before we go, Mary Lou, maybe you can let me know what your availability looks like on that week of the twenty-third. But right now, we've got that working group scheduled for the nineteenth. That's just gonna be a small group that's gonna meet and work through some things. Hopefully, we'll have enough reports back in that by the time we set the date for the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we'll have some accurate enough information. It probably won't be the entire year end totally tied up in a ribbon, but at least we'll have close enough to be able to provide that kind of information. Certainly, I would hope by that, well, definitely by the next council meeting, but we may even be able to, if we wind up with a contract meeting and/or a meeting relative to this other situation, sometime that week of the twenty-third or so, then we ought to be able to have those reports.
Great. Um, okay, time for public comments. Anybody here want to make a public comment? Anita. You sure you want to say something? Because, you know, Mike's not here.
I'm just teasing. Anita Remages, twenty-three hundred Florimond. One, thank you, all four of you, for voting yes for the lobbyist. Um, I do recall a few years ago where Ms. McFadden, I know you voted against it because you referenced the town's financial situation, and I think our town's financial situation is, is what I've heard to be excellent. So thank, thank you to all four of you. Um, number two, the term limits. This is a small town. I've talked about term limits before. It's a small town with limited volunteers, and we now have a term limit ordinance, term limit ordinance that is so ridiculously obtuse that not even four out of the five of the council members understand it. And I think it was last session or the one before where Bob was talking about someone's term limits, and Mike Johnstone shouted out, "That's C," and nobody knew what C was anyhow. So I'm glad that he did, but he's not here, and now we can't even figure out until he comes back um, because he's not here tonight. And that leads me to, we have six town officials who are elected. And out of those six, two of them recently who, well, have been appointed by a vote of one. One of them, Mike Johnstone, who was voted in by the past clerk treasurer. Their vote was two to two, and Mr. Coker, I recall that you were, you did not support Zach Neff because of his work schedule, his travel schedule, and now we have Mike Johnstone who isn't here. Our clerk treasurer was appointed by a Republican Party chair, so a vote of one. He's not here. He wasn't present in person at the year-end meeting. He hasn't, wasn't here or won't be here or may not be here for the budget finance meeting. And I just think residents need to know that he was recruited by a group of council members and citizens who were aligned in the two thousand and nineteen election. Despite his lack of experience, despite the fact that he was absolutely not recommended by the outgoing clerk treasurer, who not only said that he was not the right person for the job, but he was absolutely the wrong person for the job and did not want him to be hired. Those thoughts have proven true. Tonight, we saw the problems mentioned regarding Clerk Perry. Number one, the park board budget issue. Number two, the Bartlett litigation. I'm sorry, a pending proposed litigation. And number three, lack of a report, and he's not even here on Zoom. So I think that people need to understand this is a small town, and I think that when you, when you kind of play your cards and your games a little bit, sometimes it doesn't work out. And I think people should take responsibility for that. And I appreciate that there seems to be some responsibility where people are looking at what he is not doing and actually what he's doing badly, and taking a step back and saying, "Okay, maybe I did the wrong thing." And the other thing is that I think that it's difficult, and I look, I would look at Mr. Johnstone and Mr. Coker and say, "I don't know how you can listen to this and how you can see it and how you can hear about the dysfunction in the office and how you can see that he's not here." And when you send emails, I don't get an email back saying, "Sorry, I'm out of the office for ten days or three days or six days." And I don't understand how you could have in all, listening to all of this and seeing it and would vote to give him a fourteen thousand dollar raise. I just don't see it, you and Mr. Johnstone. So I don't see where this is a good situation, and I appreciate that there are, there are council members who look at this and say, "He is not deserving." Thank you.
Any other comments in this room? Any comments on Zoom? If you have a comment, raise your hand.
Susan, how do I know? Here? Uh, go ahead. Do I hit that?
You might have to scroll down.
Oh, sorry.
Go to the right there and pull that gray bar down. You'll get to the bottom. Go all the way to the right, grab the gray bar, that's a vertical bar, pull that down, and you should be able to see people.
Okay.
Okay, where's the hand? All right, so we can't find the hand, so if you want to make a comment, unmute yourself and just start talking.
That might be your raise my hand logo.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody out there that would like to make a comment?
Okay.
I want to run you a bar up one more time.
Yeah.
Oh, do you hear me?
I do.
Oh, okay, Doria Lemay, two-two-oh-one, Oak and Wall. Bob, you know where I live. Anyway, um, I just wanted to, I know Anita speaks with a sharp tongue, but she speaks the truth. I think she speaks for many, many residents. I would call for people either to notify you council people and also to send letters. I think all residents should ask Tim Perry to resign. I think what he has done is deplorable, um, maybe even illegal. If he could do that because one resident had made him mad, just think what, anybody who crossed his path, he could also do that to anybody. And all the information that he does have access to being the clerk. I mean, he could look at somebody and call the IRS and say, "I think you ought to, you know, investigate so-and-so." I, I think that is just unspeakable. I know it moves many of you. Um, and so I'm saying to other residents, write letters in, emails, call. I think he should resign, and I know he has to do that. I do thank all of you for voting. I would also like to see all of the council members take a more active role in our, in our beach area, to know that it is, really seems to be every couple months or every other year under attack by certain lakefront homeowners. Definitely not all. I'm friendly with many of them. But there are a certain number and a certain group, Lakefront Homeowners Association, to be exact, that their agenda is to undermine the Gunderson decision. They never liked it. They can't live with it, and they will fight for legislation to undermine it. And they do this all the time with Representative Bohatchek and Pressel. And I think council members, it should be a, one of the top five things all of, any council member going on into the future should be aware because it affects everybody. Thank you. Good job.
Any council comments? Claims approval. Do we have that?
Wait a minute, hold on. Somebody, wait a minute, hold on.
You may have had two others out there. I think Dr. Uhas may have been.
Does anybody else on Zoom have anything to say? Unmute yourself and talk if you do.
Yeah, hi, it's Dr. Uhas, twenty-two hundred Florimond. This will just take a moment. I just wanted to thank the council for enlisting the services of Mr. Chris Gibson. It was absolutely the right thing to do, and I believe the majority of Long Beach residents will support that decision, and so thank you.
Great. I think we're good now. Is there anybody else?
No.
Okay.
Was she L? You think? Okay, let me try. Put your real hand up. How's that?
There's anybody else out there on Zoom who has anything to say? Unmute yourself and talk. Okay, Deanna, I think it's yours.
Okay, all right. There actually weren't any claims to approve on the, on the town's office since the last approval of claims that we made December twenty-seventh. But in the water department, there were checks number five-four-six-three-eight through five-four-six-five-two totaling ninety thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, actually, the December payroll then was also approved on December twenty-seventh, so it's just those, those few water department checks.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.